Okay, first of all, um, normally I would speak to, I've done this presentation probably four or five times and it's much larger group, okay? But because it's a smaller group, if you don't mind, I'll just stay seated the whole time. And we'll just kind of have more of an informal conversation because as I go through the first topic, I'd like to know what you folks are doing, okay? So if you are doing any of these things that I talk about, feel free to jump into the conversation and share with us what you've done and what's successful.
And maybe everybody wants to introduce themselves.
Yeah.
I forgot that part.
Yeah, let's do that first. So let's, let's start by right, we'll go around the table.
My name is Dwight Turner, I'm the executive director for Almost Home, the new men's children's shelter.
Okay.
We're in Dubuque, we just opened our doors, taking referrals. I take part in.
Great.
Okay.
In an overview of how everything is.
Okay. Well, much of what we'll talk about today could be applied to other boards and commissions as well, not just city council. Okay, good.
Katie Winkle, Dubuque City Councilwoman.
And you live near the Forest Street Elevator a bit.
I do.
I was on the website today and I saw your address and I thought, she has got to be close to that Forest Street Elevator.
I represent Word Four, which I always say is the coolest word. But it is actually the majority of downtown Dubuque.
Okay.
Yeah, a very vibrant part of our city.
By the way, I'm sure you've seen it, but I just watched it on television the other night. I will hope that television has a historical buildings in Dubuque program. And the Forest Street Elevator, of course, is one of the areas that's featured. They did an excellent job on that, so uh, I think Dubuque needs to let the word out, hey, watch that, folks, it's really good. Some of the aerial shots with the drones are just really outstanding, yeah.
Got a lot of historical structures to write about.
Yeah, we have, we're, we just did a piece on the city channels. No drone and every footage from that was really spectacular.
Okay. But yeah, I haven't been born, raised, not part of here, I was really enjoying that, feeling like, good, so.
Jessica. Jessie Kennedy, Liberty City Clerk in Edward. So I just work part-time, Janet Fenn, there 37 or 38 years, she's full-time city clerk, so lots to learn. She's helping me out.
Okay.
Keeping me on my toes.
I'm Lindsay Keller and I'm the city clerk for Durango.
Okay.
And I'm Joyce Sabers and I'm a councilperson for the city of Sherrill.
Okay.
And I'm Carol Duncan and I'm on the council for the city of Dwyer, my second round.
Good, right.
It's a long story. Ten years, gone 12, now I'm back.
You know, a long time ago. So just a little bit about my background, I have been involved in city government, believe it or not, last week marked my 50th year, 50-year anniversary of being involved in city government at various levels. Twenty-three years as a city manager, I was in a little town of West Point, Iowa, way down in southeast part of the state. And then I was in McCoqueta for a number of years as a city manager. Then took a break and did consulting, then went back to being a city administrator in the town of Ammosa, which is where I still live today. And then retired from that and thought, you know, I like Jessica's son-in-law, is it your father-in-law or, yeah? Like, well, what am I gonna do now?
Yeah.
And I didn't come up with something like he did. I thought, I'm gonna keep doing this consulting, because I love doing it. And, um, and it's pretty rewarding for me and, and it gets me out there and keeps me engaged in this, so. So my wife says, um, when are you gonna quit doing this? And I said, well, I suppose when the phone quits ringing, I'll quit doing it. But the phone keeps ringing, so who knows, another year or two and I probably do like your father-in-law kind of phase out even more, so. But all total, 27 years doing consulting for various organizations, um, Schneider and Associates, an engineering firm, the Institute of Public Affairs, the University of Iowa, which is now unfortunately no longer exists. Um, and then also a company that did bond issues, Ruon Securities. And so I kind of had a wide background of working with a lot of city councils in a lot of different timeframes and in a lot of different roles. And so about two years ago, somebody challenged me and said, well, as you look back over your career, what have you noticed that the cities that were really successful and got a lot done? What do they have in common? And then what do some of the ones that struggled and seemed to fight all the time, what do they have in common? And I really sat down and started thinking about it and I thought, there's some things that really do come to mind when I look back over my 50 years in city government of cities that have really got their act together and some have done some great things versus those that just seem to struggle all the time. And I've also watched over the years, when you see this, you see these cycles, okay? Some cities can go through cycles where they get a fantastic amount of things done. And then they might go into a down cycle and it just seems like everything's a struggle. And then maybe they might come back out of it and so. Dubuque is a perfect example. I've watched that history for 50 years and there's been cycles up and downs. I think you're on a high point now, so you've, you've got a lot done here recently, so. But, uh, but there are definitely cycles that I've watched over the years. That's why I did this presentation. And to think back and I, and tell you about the cities that I observed and what they have done to be successful. Now, I will tell you this much, um, not every successful city will adopt all of these habits, you know? You might adopt some of them. The other thing is, you may follow a number of these habits and still not be successful. So that's kind of my, my disclaimer. But a good general rule is, if you do a lot of these things, your probability of success, I think, will be much greater. So, and the added bonus is, if you do a lot of these things, you'll enjoy the job more. Because, let's face it, you know, being in city government in this day and age can be really frustrating at times. And it can be really stressful. And, um, there's a lot of things beyond, totally beyond your control. But there are some things I'm gonna talk about that are within your control. And you can do these things and I think life will be better for you if you do that, so. And the other thing I like to tell people, the reason I think this is important, because I want you to think of your legacy question, okay? How will you be remembered in your current role? As a council member, as a city employee? And you control that, okay? Now, we all have, uh, I always tell people, we have a personal life and a work life. Jessica's father-in-law right now is helping his kids and his grandchildren. That's gonna be his legacy in his personal life. I can tell you that the day of his funeral, they're gonna talk about what a great job he did with all those kids and grandchildren. And I'm hoping that's part of my legacy too, because I, I have seven grandchildren and three kids and I'm very involved in their life. And, uh, and made it a point to be involved in their lives, so. But we also have a work legacy. People will remember you in that role at City Hall, people will remember you in that role as a city council member. What, how do you want to be remembered? What do you want that legacy to be? And a lot of people don't think about that until it's too late, until they're gone, so this is why we're gonna talk about this. I ran across a couple quotes that I thought were quite interesting. One was, if you don't know where you want to go, any road will get you there. So if you don't lay out plan, um, who knows where you'll end up? Now, the other one, um, when I was a young man, there was a radio commentator, I used to listen to him in the morning, I absolutely loved him because he was very inspiring. His name is Earl Knightley. Now, most of you have probably never heard that name. But he was a, you know, he would have been a great after-dinner speaker, but, um, he had a quote one time and said, if you don't know what you want to be, then you have no control over what you will end up becoming. So we control our legacy, we control, you know, how people perceive us and see us. Okay, I'm gonna go down through what I call my 10 habits. I'm gonna go through them very quickly. And I am not gonna dwell on them a lot unless you've got questions on each and every one of them. And, um, also I'm gonna challenge you, if your city has done some of the stuff we're talking about, um, send us a copy of it. And then we can send it out to everybody through the email. Send it to Tricia and then she can scan it and send it back out to all of us. For example, if you've done something in Dubuque that we're gonna talk about, that we could all learn from, perfect. Send it to Tricia and she'll scan it, send it to people to look at, so. So send us your examples as we run through the 10 habits that I've identified. Okay, first one. I say, start with the basics. I urge cities to have a brief, concise mission statement. And if you want to see one, go to the Dubuque website. I went to the Dubuque website today, they have a very nice, concise mission statement, a good example. They also have a vision statement. These are things that, you know, you're not gonna see a lot of specifics there, but they're gonna be statements to the outside world to kind of set this tone for who we are and what we're all about and why we even exist. And so I think it's good for your councils and, and your organizations to say, why are we here? What is our purpose? And what is our vision for the future? And if we don't lay that out for our constituents and our public to see, um, we don't have that guiding light to take us forward, so. Um, like I said, there's a lot of the cities out there will have them and most of the time they will have them on their website. And like I said, I looked at Dubuque today and, um, you know, it's there for anybody that want to look at. I know, I think Asbury has one as well, so. The other thing I urge cities to do is develop your long-range goals and objectives. Now, one of the handouts you have that I have, is, this is one of the things that I have done with cities, is they're helping them lay out their goals and objectives. And in fact, I did that in Dubuque a long, long time, you know? And so I just recently did it in Puyallup and Dyersville. Um, but anyway, it's putting all the potential projects on the table, discussing them and then rank them in, rank them and prioritize them. Once again, on that same page I looked at Dubuque today, they have their long-range goals and objectives, clearly laid out, so the public and anyone's interest to conceive, this is what they're focused on, this is what they want to get. Now, the other thing that I highly recommend is that, um, you do a good orientation session for your, for the new board members or new council members that come on board. And this, this could apply not to just the city councils, but to any board or commission. Too many times we get appointed to these boards and commissions or we get elected to the council and it's totally different than anything we've ever done before. And I tell you, city government is so complicated and so complex anymore that I can guarantee you that if they, that the people that just came on board have never been involved in city government in any way, they're like fully lost for a while. It is, it is like unlike anything they've ever seen before. And I, I compliment anybody that hangs in there and doesn't quit right away because I can think it can be very overwhelming. However, if you put a good, a good orientation program for them so that they can kind of get the big picture and get a grasp of what's going on, um, it will really help them, you know, move into this new role that they have now. Now, I didn't see anything on the Dubuque website about an orientation program, but I'm assuming they probably had now. Katie, you're fairly new, right? Did they have an orientation program for you when you started?
They did, so, um, you meet with every department head until you get to go to every department, um, do a ride-along with police, um, do the shadow and fire. And then, um, yeah, I mean, we have a handbook, it's, you know, about codes of conduct and, um, we dive pretty deep into that.
Okay.
But it was very helpful, I, at the end of it, I said, um, the only thing I would ask for of
Yeah.
is for somebody to guide me through, um, all of the electronic ways to access the information when I first start, so we have our agendas online.
Yes.
And I guess I felt like I was stumbling a little bit at first and really had to navigate that on my own. And I feel like I did, but it, it slowed me down a little bit, I felt like, for the first couple months. Um, so I said, if there's anything I would do more of, it would be to orient to the technology of the city and it's.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah. Now, one of the things I've given you, you, don't, don't worry about pulling it out now, you can look at it later, is I did a workshop on this very topic for the city clerks, the municipal finance offices association, so. You have my outline of my workshop and some, some additional handouts that went with it that day. So if you weren't there for that presentation, um, you have a good outline of what, what should go into an orientation program. So does anyone else do an orientation program for councils or new board members? Okay, does anyone else do goal setting for the councils besides Dubuque, Dubuque? You still do it, Dubuque?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, how often do you do it?
Well, it's a 10-year plan, so every year we.
Yeah, every year you, you know, we evaluate.
Yeah, we're getting ready for that after budget.
Okay, good, good.
Let's stay, stay on.
Now, this is something, I don't, even the Dubuques of the world, I'm sure they all do them, but even the smaller cities can do goal setting. I, I've done goal setting in towns of, you know, a little over 1,000 population, so. Uh, it's something that every community can benefit from, so. Uh, once again, there's a handout that talks about that, okay? Next thing is what I call, understanding the elements of teamwork, okay? And this should also be part of your orientation session, is that you always have to keep in mind that this, that a city council is made up of a very diverse group of people coming with a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different experiences, and will see things slightly different. There's nothing wrong with that, that's actually a good thing, because that then gives you different perspectives. The thing that councils have to learn is that the only time they have any power is when they all come together as one entity at a formally convened city council meeting. One of the hardest things for new council members, particularly in smaller towns, to comprehend is they have absolutely no power individually. And actually have no power outside that council chambers in a meeting, because if they start giving direction and making decisions, decisions outside of that council chambers, they're gonna get in trouble with the open meetings. So in order to have any power, they have to be a regularly convened council meeting and then you've got to get a majority of those council members to say, this is what we need to do. And, uh, and they all have to be trying to work together to accomplish a specific purpose. They all have to be trying to, you know, the purpose of the goal setting is to lay out what your objectives are going forward so you can all focus on those things. The other key thing that I've learned over the years where the cities that have been successful versus the ones that have not is there has to be trust, there has to be openness, and boy, and there's gotta be mutual respect. If those things are not lacking, or those things are lacking rather, you're gonna struggle because your council meetings are gonna be a nightmare. And, um, you are really gonna have a hard time getting things, good things done in your community if suddenly you find that we've lost the trust, we've lost the openness, we've lost the mutual respect, so. It's a key part of what we call the elements of teamwork. And I could do a whole other workshop on that, in fact, I do one on, um, on, uh, that very topic of, of building back respect and trust and, and, uh, and having a good working relationship. Any comments or observations on number two? Okay, go with number three. Um, that's the ability to, um, master a small group discussion, that's ability to work with others, um, but in order to work at a council chambers, at a council meeting, you gotta have good information. And that's where the staff comes in, that's where you folks come in, getting the council that good information, okay? And another key thing is, as a city manager, um, I always had to remember, I wanted to get the same information to all the council members at the same time. Because once you start giving out information in a piecemeal approach, some council members get it, some people don't, that's where the jealousies come into play and that's where like, how come that council member is favored over me? And so the one part of advice I'll give to any staff members, give the same information to all the council members at the same time. Now, I used to have a council member that would love to stop and see me a lot, okay? And this was before emails, so I didn't have the luxury of sending out an email to everybody when he'd leave. But he always wanted to know what's new, what's the latest thing, okay? Well, I would share things from time to time with him and of course, then he might run into another council member and say, hey, by the way, did you know? Well, of course they didn't know, they hadn't been in my office as often as he had, so. That can create friction between council and staff or, or, um, board members and staff if any board member or any council member feels that they're being left out or there's another council member, board member that's being favored over the other, so. What you want to be doing is very careful about getting that good knowledge to all the council members. The other thing is, is the ability to deal with things rationally, you know? And being able to sit back and see the other person's perspective and, um, every once in a while you hear stories about councils out there that, you question, where did the rationality go? It's out the window because it's a totally irrational approach to something, so we gotta deal with things rationally. The other key thing I tell councils is, respect the dignity of the office, okay? And that goes for boards too. You know, if you don't respect the dignity of that office, you know, and you were duly elected by the public, you were addicted to do an awesome job and a very important job in the community. And if you're doing things to, uh, take away from the dignity of that office, uh, it's going to not only drag you down, it could also drag the, the, the whole city down as well. I know a little city just south of Iowa City right now is dealing with something like that, okay? And the individual probably should resign possibly. But unfortunately, they've chosen not to resign. And as a result, it's kind of, you can see where it's kind of dragging the city down, so. Uh, it's important to, um, not only respect the dignity of the office, but the other key thing is to act professionally at all times, both at the council meeting and in the public. Right, because if you're a staff member or you're a council member, I'll guarantee you, there's a lot of people out there know who you are, you may not know who they are. But because of your high-profile position, they know who you are. And so when they see you in, in public, in a public setting, being less than professional, it reflects back on you, the council and, and the city as well. So it's always important that you keep that in mind and always remember this, you are the city, okay? In the eyes of the public, you are the city, council members, staff members. When they think city, they think of you. And if they have positive thoughts of you, they have more positive thoughts about the city as a whole. So all good things to keep in mind, uh, when you're dealing with people. Any comments or questions on that title? Okay, let's talk a little bit about, um, clearly defining the roles and the relationships. One of the things that's important for that orientation session is to talk about the role of the mayor, the role of the council and the role of staff, totally different roles. And if suddenly the roles are blended together where you have council members or trying to give direction to department heads or, you know, uh, staff members acting like they're council members, then you're gonna have problems, so. The thing to do is obviously, everybody should know their job descriptions. You know, as a council member, I think it's important for you to see the job descriptions of all your, all of your department heads, especially in your city manager, so you know what is their role. And, um, it's not a bad idea to review the OC Leader Handbook. Now, this is a 2022 edition that's put out by the Iowa League of Cities, but there's a whole chapter in there on the role of a council member and the role of a, of a mayor. So it's important that everybody understand what those roles are and what everybody's responsibility is in the overall operations of the city. And what are the expectations? Now, as a council member, your expectation is like of the city manager and city clerk is, you're gonna give me good information, uh, it's gonna be information I can trust to be true and you're gonna give me all the information. You're not gonna withhold information, you're gonna give me everything I need to know so I can make an informed decision for the people of our community. Now, other side of the equation, there comes a, there, there also should be an expectation of what the behavior of the council is going to be. For example, I know city managers out there that council members try to get them to see their way of thinking and say, uh, Mr. City Manager, surely you see it this way, don't you? When maybe they don't, but maybe there's other council members that have a totally different perspective and they try to get staff members and city managers to take sides. Uh, that can make the role of being a city manager or city clerk very, very challenging. When you, uh, when you have two different fractions of a council tugging at war with each other and, uh, and, um, and trying to get you in the middle of it, because as a staff member, um, I was reminding myself, I worked for everybody. Not just one or two council members that maybe were the most vocal. I've worked for the entire city council and they all had equal representation. And, um, I had to respect that. Now, one of the things that I have seen done, and it's kind of fairly recent, I didn't, I wouldn't have put this on a slide 10, 20 years ago. And that is a city council code of conduct. And we don't have to go very far, in my mind, to find a good model, and that's Asbury. Uh, and what a code of conduct is, it basically says, as a council member, as an elected official, these are the expectations. Here's how you'll interact with each other, here's how you'll interact with the staff. Um, and I know other ones that have this, in fact, um, the last presentation I did this, I heard that Musketeen has one, Avoca Iowa has one. I even heard Little Town of Central City has one, Sack City in Fairfield, um, have these codes of conduct. I will have to give credit, uh, the, the best one that I've run across is Asbury. And Beth Bonds at Asbury was kind enough to give me a copy of it. You have a copy of it, all this stuff today, that you're, you're welcome to take home with you. But it, and, and knowing Beth, that you were inclined to want to do something like this, she'd probably be more than happy to talk to you, okay? Uh, she's, she's a great source of, a great resource that you folks need to take advantage of in this part of the state, because she's, she's a wealth of information, as they say. So she has done a lot of great things in Asbury, uh, doesn't get a lot of publicity maybe, but done a lot of great things out there, so. She, um, she's got a code that she put in. Now, I wrote an article on this subject for the League Magazine and I think I have a copy of it possibly in there somewhere, but, um, anyway, I, I've asked a question, when's the time, when's a good time to put together a code of conduct? It's when things are going very smoothly. Not when all hell just broke loose. And we have a renegade council out there that's like, you know, trashing each other, not, not a good time to do that. When things are going well, that's the time to, you can rashly sit down and put one of these together and, and for no other reason, do it for the next generation, okay? Do it for that next council that maybe isn't quite as fortunate as you folks are right now if things are going well. And that way, they will have something to fall back on. And the article that I wrote, and more or less said, you know what? Kind of hard to put some teeth in there that you, 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 you can threaten them, you know, if they don't follow it. But what you can do is you can say, you know, this is the expectations. Now, you were duly elected by the people and unless you commit a felony, you're on the council, you know? Unless you just, it's really hard in Iowa to get somebody off the council that's not being a, a fun person to work with, okay? That just isn't gonna cut it. They have to commit a felony and even then sometimes I wonder how tough it would be to get them off. But what you can say is, as a, let's, let's say you have a council member that is just out there and just making wreck, wrecking havoc and not being respectful. Um, you could say to them, you know, this will stop or we will censor you, you know? Now, that doesn't mean you're off the council, but that's a public statement, that's pretty severe saying to the public, you know, this person is, is not good. And we would hope next time around you don't elect them again. Now, we can't stop you from electing them again, but at least we want to put the word out now. Um, that might deter people a little bit, because I would think if you're a rational, reasonable person, you don't want it on your record and your legacy that you were censored by your existing council members, that just doesn't look good, you know? It's, let's put it this way, it's not gonna be something that's gonna show up in your obituary. So, uh, so that's one thing you have. So do any of you have something like this, a code of conduct? Okay.
We do.
You do?
That was the first thing I did when I assumed my position.
Oh, good for you.
Set up a code of conduct, because we're stewards of public funds and it's an expectation of mine and everyone thought that.
Would you mind sending that to Tricia?
Sure.
And then anybody else who would like to see it, that would be great, you know, we can.
We're just a low-key, you know?
Yeah, but still, it's.
Okay, yeah.
You never know, there might be some things in there that, uh, that other folks are going to duplicate and have, so.
Professional interaction, that kind of thing is something I demanded my staff, that every,
their, their appearance and what they say, it could be on the front page of the paper, my own, it better be good.
Yes.
Essentially, it's like, oh.
Yeah, yeah, it, it never ceases to be amazing, you say. It never ceases to amaze me that you say the front page of the paper. It never ceases to amaze me that people were writing these emails. And I always tell people, when you're writing an email, before you push send, ask yourself this question, am I okay if it's on the front page of the Des Moines Register or the Telegraph Herald tomorrow? If I'm okay with it being on the front page, send. Otherwise, I wouldn't send that if I were you. Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, that's something. Unfortunately, it seems like we don't use the phone here as much as we used to. I'm not sure if that's a good thing. I, I tend to like to pick up the phone because in an email, you can't get that tone inflection and, were they kidding? Were they serious? You know, but when the phone call, you can, you can pick that up in the voice many times. So anyway, whole other subject, whole other workshop. Okay, all right. Any other observations or questions on this particular number four? Okay, all right. Let's go to number five, and that is establish and abide by a good city council staff partnership. Because this truly is a partnership, you know? Because we, the one can't get the job done without the other, you know? You've got to have a city council to make decisions, set policy directives, and you got to have a staff to carry it out. So it's a two-way street, but, and there's got to be a good working relationship between the two. If there's not, it's not a fun job to be on a council and it's not a fun job to be part of the city staff. So in this partnership, it's the council's job then to do the vision, the goals, the policies, and then to empower the staff to get the job done. A council needs to define what it is that we need to get done, what, what are the needs we need to make? What are the outcomes we're looking for, okay? It's up to the council to lay it out all out. Staff, your role then is to carry out the directives, to get the job done as best you can, to complete the task. And another very important part of this, provide feedback. Because too many times, you know, the council will lay out a directive and, and the staff will start working on it and run into some issues or problems and maybe not have the courage to go back to the council and say, you know what? What you came up with, that's not working, that's not good. And so council, we need to re, regroup here and rethink this because for this reason, it's not working. Now, and it's got to be, you got to provide a little more detail too. You're going to say, this is why it's not working, and this is why we need to rethink this. And then it's up to the council to decide, do we keep pushing or do we try something different? So the key element in this whole partnership, of course, is something I talked about earlier. And that is trust and communications and, and, and the council evaluating the staff and evaluating the city manager so that they get feedback on what kind of job they're doing and both positive and, or if there's concerns if there's out there. So the other key thing about all this partnership is every city has something called the chain of command. And if you don't follow that chain of command, there will be problems and issues down the road. Because one of the things in small towns that I see, it's hard for councils to resist doing what I call micromanaging, where they will bypass the city administrator or city manager and just go right to the public works guy and say, you know what? We need to get that street plowed first, you know? That's a high priority street, that you need to plow that snow off that street right away. And then totally bypass the city manager or city administrator. That is going to cause havoc because that department head is hearing from one council member. And maybe the rest of the council doesn't feel that way, okay? What does that department head do now? And maybe it's totally different than what the city administrator told them a week or so ago. So they'll get mixed signals. You've got to follow that chain of command. And if you don't, you will find in some communities where if everybody's telling the department head what to do and they're just getting bombarded, they will start looking for another job. And they will leave, and you will lose some good people if you don't have a good chain of command. So very important part of this whole process is to do that. Any observations or comments on what I call this good city council staff partnership? Okay, let's go to the next one. And that is a systematic evaluation of policy. I kind of alluded to that a little bit in the last slide. You need to do feedback on how things are going. There's a long list of things on the Dubuque website of projects they're working on. I can guarantee you that staff is giving that council regular feedbacks on how things are going on those different programs and projects. These are done by obviously written reports, staff memos. One of my favorite things, I like newsletters that go out on a regular basis. Now, what I used to do as city manager is between every council meeting, I would send out a memo to the council, just refreshing on what's happened, what's on the agenda, why it's there, what the expectations are, so that council members are kind of kept informed of what's going on from time to time. Now, the other thing for councils to remember is that occasionally, you will have a brilliant idea and you'll think, hey, this is, this is really wonderful. We really need to do it. But then you've got to be willing to accept the fact that maybe we need to tweak it a little bit. Maybe there needs to be some revisions. And sometimes we get so locked in on a particular project or policy and then we think, this is the absolute best way, there's no other way, and this is how we're going to do it, and we're never going to change it. You, you've got to go in with an open mind on all this stuff because there might be a better way of doing something. So one of the best ways to do that, in my opinion, is work sessions. I think city council work sessions are a great idea. How many of you do work sessions between your council meetings? Okay, Duett, does Dubuque does. Okay, what I like about them is that it gives the council the opportunity in a more informal setting. Now, Brandon, it is still open to the public and it is still, you know, has to be advertised as a public meeting, you know, all that, and you're just up to have an agenda minutes. But you can focus out and leave the public out of it if you want to and just focus on maybe a key department head and get more detailed information and have a more general discussion about what's taking place and, and for you then to ask good questions. When you have a council meeting, it's a more formal session. And obviously, there's motions and seconds and you take your actions and there's limits on debate and that sort of thing. But in a work session, it's, it's a more informal setting. And it's a good way for council members to kind of come up to speed and, you know, various projects that you're working on. So Indy Wip, how often do you do work sessions?
Oh, once a year.
Okay.
That's coming up too, it's kind of.
Okay, so you do one kind of, one big annual work session. I bet Dubuque does multiple work sessions, right?
We usually do them before every council.
Oh, really? Okay, so you, you come into a work session, then you finish that and go.
Sometimes we do two.
Okay.
So our meetings start at six thirty, we'll oftentimes start a work session at five fifteen.
Okay.
And then some, like for instance, Monday, we are an off meeting night, but we're having a work session.
Okay.
So we, we do them quite often.
Okay.
I really appreciate them because it's usually a very condensed way to get information about something that's going to be a vote in the future.
Yeah.
But not something that we're acting on in that moment. And then public opinion can come at you after.
Yeah. The other key thing is all the council members are there, right? And you all get the same information at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, okay, well, good. All right, any other questions or observations on number six? Okay, let's go to the next topic. And that is allocating the time and energy to do this job. And the one, one comment I hear more often than anything about a council member after they've maybe been in office a year or two is, how much time it took? To do the job right, it takes a lot of time. Now, you probably have experienced that as a council member. Probably put more time in than what you maybe expected before you first went on years ago, right?
Exactly, because I had to recheck everything, make sure it was right, and yeah. Now I'm kind of better.
Yeah.
But still, you got to think about it.
Yeah, oh yeah. Well, anyway, obviously, one of the things I think that you should be doing as a council with your time and energy is goal setting that we talked about, the work sessions we talked about, but also the community relations, you know, reaching out to your citizens and various agencies that you're working with to get an idea of, you know, are we going in the right direction? Are we doing what you, you know, want us to do? So, and then the other thing I think is kind of part of this that the staff is going to do this, but is a good capital improvements plan. And, and most of the bigger cities in Iowa have a good capital improvements plan. Unfortunately, a lot of the smaller cities do not. Now, does Duett have one? Does Eppworth have a capital improvements plan, do you know?
I don't think so.
Really? Okay, all right. That's great because I think what it does is that it helps the city see all the major projects that are on the table that are under consideration right now. And more importantly, it talks about, or it should talk about, how we're going to pay for it, okay? Because I, I tell council members, it's one thing to have all these great ideas and all these projects you're going to do, but it's a whole other story figuring out how you're going to pay for it. So, once again, you're going to find a handout on, on capital, capital improvements plans and why it's important to do them, how you can go ahead and put one together. I actually do a workshop on that for the Iowa State University, their Iowa Municipal Professionals Institute Academy for city managers and city clerks, where I go into, it's actually a four-hour course on how to put together a capital improvements plan. And so, but you have the handout for that if you'd like. So, let's see. How many, how many, how many of you have formal community relations or outreach programs where you do town hall meetings or things that you give the public an opportunity to, to do more than just to require public hearings? Does anybody do anything like that?
Personally?
Yeah, personally or as a, as a council as a whole? Like, do you do a town hall meeting in Dubuque ever?
I have.
Okay.
It was helped to be organized by a community member. It wasn't that well-attended and so I realized I needed to actually, I needed to go to people.
Okay.
I felt like that was much more comfortable for people. So to try and tour organizations, of which I would.
Yeah.
But, but that's how I feel like I've benefited more because when you're asking everybody to come to you, to me, that assumes that you want to come to me as opposed to I want to come to you, I want to know what you need.
Yeah, more personal.
Please tell me, yeah. And I, if I can see your facility, I can see when you come to council with an improvement in two years, what it is that you need or.
Yeah.
And so I, I've, I felt personally like that was more helpful for me.
I'm trying not to appear, I'm trying not to appear to beg too much.
You should, that's your job.
Well, I, I don't know if they still do it, but I was part of one that they did in Piastah. They did a town hall meeting in Piastah a few years ago. And it was, it was quite interesting. There was, there was one particular subject, but they kind of opened it up for a lot of different topics at the time. So they, and they did a nice job on it a few years ago. So I, I know there's a few other cities out there that do kind of formal things beyond the typical public hearings to get some feedback. The other thing I see done is surveys. Some cities do a survey. You do a survey? Oh, okay. How often do you do that survey?
Oh, every ten years or five years.
Would you find sending to Tricia, if you can, if, if the, the kind of form that you use?
It's online.
Is it? Oh, good.
Uh, Duett City, um, I don't think, just go on the website.
Okay.
If you don't, let me know. Okay, so just go to the state of Duett's website.
Good.
It may be on Facebook now that I think about it because you can answer on Facebook.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, because more people we get, more effort.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
If you need it, let me know, it should be there.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, next topic I'm going to talk about is having clear rules and procedures at your council meetings. Because like that bottom line says, meetings are your image to the outside world. And if those meetings are chaos, that's the image you present to the outside world. So, but you need to think in terms of having effective, well-run, productive meetings. And many times, of course, the mayor will play a key role. And I have worked with a number of mayors over my career. Some mayors run great meetings. One that comes to mind, I just retired not too long ago, was Milt Kramer out of Manchester. Milt was a, he was mayor for many, many years. He ran a great meeting. And I know there's a number of mayors in the area that, you know, do, have done a great job. I've also seen the flip side where mayors don't run the greatest meetings in the world and they kind of lose control. And meetings can be really challenging if a mayor loses control of them. So, or whoever, you know, whoever's the chair of the meeting. So another good thing to do is to adopt rules and procedures. So that, once again, it's in writing, this is how we are going to conduct our meetings. How many of you have written procedures for how your meetings will be conducted? Okay, Dubuque does, okay. All right, anybody else have them?
I saw.
If you haven't seen it, it doesn't exist. We have given you some examples of those, what they look like. And the whole purpose of it is to make sure that the council's business is conducted in an orderly and it's a disciplined and productive manner. And so another thing that I, I like to tell councils, and although it's getting more and more difficult in this day and age, I don't know if you saw the last piece of legislature that's been proposed, and that is having council meetings, council seats and school boards elected on a partisan basis. Instead of not, that would, in my mind, would be a total mistake. Just one of the things we've prided ourselves for years in Iowa is nonpartisan local elections. And, and so I always tell councils, the best thing you can do is avoid all political partisanship at council meetings, you know? You know, obviously, you probably are going to know how that person's registered if you take the time to look it up, you know, are they registered as a Democrat? Are they registered Republican or whatever they might be registered as? You know, you can, you can take the time and find that, or maybe they're very upfront about it and tell you right away. But I think we make a mistake of taking political things and political issues maybe from the federal level and bringing them down to the local level. Because I think many times, those are issues beyond our control and can cause a lot of, a lot of hard feelings, a lot of bickering among council members who, you know, are all good people that maybe see things a little differently. So if you can, leave the partisan politics out of it as best you can. But I will admit, it is getting more and more difficult to do that. And I, I really feel sorry for the staff in these situations because the staff many times will be the ones getting caught in the middle. But, but the bottom line is, if you, your meetings are how the, how the world perceives you. And so a lot of meetings are taped now. And so if I wanted to watch one of your council meetings and see how they're conducted, I'd probably just go to your website. So how many, how many of you have your meetings taped and I can go to the website and watch them? You do, okay, you do? Nobody else does?
You tape, but, you know.
Yeah, they're not on your website. Well, you, there's quite a few cities out there right now, I can go back and, and watch them. Some of them are cities that I know for a fact struggle. And it's like, I can't believe you're putting that out there, but you are. Anyway, here's some examples of other cities that I thought, I've run across with good rules and procedures. Sack City, Decora, Muscatine, Esteville. And then I've got some examples for you to look at. So if you think that is something that your city can benefit from, you've got some examples to work with there. So any other observations or comments on council rules and procedures? Okay, let's go to the next topic, and that is, and we kind of touched upon some of this already, and that's seeking assessment from the public about, you know, what we're doing and getting some feedback from those folks. I mentioned, you know, surveys, questionnaires, public hearings. Another key thing that is so important in this day and age is a good city website, you know? And keeping that city website, you know, up to date with a lot of stuff. And so I, I've watched a lot of cities put up a website and then, and then never looked at it again for a long time. And that, and I, and I know there's a lot to do with city hall, but if you're going to have a website, obviously, you know, keep it up to date on what's going on. Now, when I did the workshop the last time at the league meeting, I asked councils to raise their hands. How many of you just recently updated your website and feel pretty, pretty good about it? Here's three examples for smaller cities that they say, I have not checked them out, but Springville, Sack City, and Ely said that they've recently updated their websites and they feel pretty good about them. So Springville, Sack City, and Ely were two of them. So, but anyway, it's a great place for you to get information out about what the city is doing, the programs, the projects you're working on. That's a good way to find out, you know, who's the staff, who's on council. For example, like I said today, I went on the Dubuque website just because I saw. For example, like I said today, I went on the Dubuque website, just because I saw Katie was registered, and I had never met her, so I thought, I don't know. Nice little bio, by the way, that was very well done.
I also put up a website when I ran for election. I had somebody I hired who had campaign funds to help me do that.
Oh, did you? Okay.
And to keep that up to date also a little bit. I, it's so strange to put a website up of yourself.
Yes.
It's just really strange. And a Facebook page, and...
I have a website, my biggest sale, like, is keeping it updated, and the first, I'm kind of phasing out a little bit, so I'm not daring near as many projects as I used to, so, but...
But I think there is a benefit in accessibility to constituents, so through the website on Dubuque, you can email every single council member individually or together with the same email. It all comes to us, and it's really a very efficient way.
I like that.
You can list complaints to the city website, real time, and then staff will get back to you. And our staff does a pretty good job. They get the maintenance of it.
Yes, and that's the key. Larger cities have usually someone dedicated to doing that. And that's a challenge for smaller cities, because you have a limited amount of people on staff, and they all have jobs.
Or Chamber does it for us.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Well, you're lucky there.
The city. Yeah, they got everything on the police, fire, everything's on there.
Wow, you're lucky there.
We pay a little bit, but, you know.
Yeah.
They'll kick in.
It's nice.
One person does it, it's nice.
Okay. Well, and the other subject I bring into play here about dealing with public is something that twenty years ago I wouldn't have had out there, and that's social media. And so, I'm a little bit of old school on that one. I, my wife is on Facebook, but, and, and our picture's there together, but I'm not on there. She'll say to me once in a while, you come over here and look at this, you got to see this. I'm not putting stuff out there. I can tell you, there's four stories out there about cities that have really struggled with social media. I won't tell you which city, but I had a city that was in controversy, and I had written a report for them, and they got a newly-elected council member, and that council member took one little piece of that report that fit the narrative they were looking for, and that's what she put on Facebook, totally left the rest of that report off. And I was like, all of a sudden, it was pointed out to me, and I was not a happy camper, because I was like, no, you're missing. This is just a small part of this. And so, people, you know, you know, they will take advantage of situations, and my only word of advice on social media is that when someone puts something out there about the city that is inaccurate, or maybe is missing key elements, years ago, I would have been inclined to ignore it and hope it goes away. I don't take that position anymore. I feel that if somebody puts something out there that is inaccurate and wrong, as a city, we need to address it, and in a professional way, say, that is inaccurate, here is the whole story. You know, usually, when you see something, there's a little piece of truth to it, and then the rest of it's not. So, I, I urge people to watch that social media and to correct it when it's not accurate, because I think what happens sometimes when you don't correct it, then there's a large number of people think, well, nobody disagreed with that, so it must be right, you know? It must be correct, otherwise, somebody would have said something. So, I think it's important that we address those issues. So, that is a whole other topic, and workshop in itself, and I know the league has done some things on social media, so. Any comments or observations on, how many, how many of you have cities have a Facebook page, or do you have a Facebook page?
I do.
You do?
It needs updating, for sure.
Okay, okay. Anybody want to share any challenges you've had with Facebook or social media?
I do a lot with the Facebook page. And when we had the event where Western Dubuque High School was locked down for several hours, there was a lot of Facebook posts from the citizens and concerned parents, which is fine, saying, "City Hall told us to go pick up our kids." And I called City Hall, and they're not releasing any information. It's just, it snowballed, and we were not the ones to make any calls whatsoever. We were, you know, we had no information from the school yet, we had no information from the police department yet. We had no information, and we were just our kind of home base for the parents to wait, you know? And they were looking to us for answers, and then we got blamed for not providing answers. And that part was hard, because they're on Facebook posting incorrect information, or upset that we weren't providing information, but we're not associated with the school or the task force that was handling it, the sheriff's office. We had to wait for directions from the sheriff's office.
It's got to be tough.
And so, that part was tough, because they do have freedom of speech.
Yeah.
And you can't block them, you can't stop them from saying anything, but you also can't sit there and not be kind on the internet, you know?
Yep.
You don't want to stand at the bottom of the hill with that snow.
And I was just kind of like, you know what, I'll take the beat today. Yeah, if my older children were still in high school, I, I wouldn't know where to look for answers.
So, they were drugged into something really wasn't a city issue.
Right, but I, but we were drugged into it and bashed a little bit for it, but, so that's a struggle, because you can't respond.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, any other comments on this subject before I go to number ten? Okay, let's go to number ten, and this is the last number, last item, and that is continuous learning, you know, both as a staff and as a council. The best thing I can tell council members is get a copy of the handbook. Now, this is the 2022 version. Every two years, the league puts out an updated version of the Iowa Municipal Policy Leader's Handbook. This should be the bible for any newly-elected council member, any newly-elected mayor in the state of Iowa. It is very well done. I have a little source of pride here, because the very first edition that was put out in 1995, I was a part of. It was the brainchild of Tim Shields at the Institute of Public Affairs, who had seen some similar books that were put out by the institute earlier, but they were not as detailed, they were, didn't cover near the subject matter, and Tim felt, we can do a lot better job on this. So, we got a number of examples from other states, and looked at a number of examples. He brought in a law student, and, and I was working with him at the time, and we put together about, about thirteen or fourteen chapters, and they have pretty much followed the same format. They update it every two years with a lot of new information, so. But if you have not seen the handbook, or you've not read it, both staff and elected, I would urge you to read that handbook. Another good thing to do is to attend the Iowa League of Cities Conference and Workshops, and they do an annual conference every year, excellent source of information. Unfortunately, the next conference is on the opposite end of the state of Iowa for us. It's in Sioux City this year, so it's a long drive. I'm curious to see what their attendance numbers look like, but they do have it here in Dubuque once in a while. I don't know when they're scheduled for Dubuque again.
Was Waterloo last year, wasn't it?
It was Waterloo last year, yes, I think. No, that was...
Is that two years?
Cedar Rapids last year, Waterloo the year before, wasn't it? Yeah. But we're quite fortunate in eastern Iowa. We get, we get sites in Davenport, Dubuque, Waterloo, Corralville, and so, we have been really fortunate, whereas sometimes it'll be in Des Moines, and then once in a while it'll be out in Sioux City in Council Plus, so. But, once again, take advantage of that. They also do a lot of great workshops throughout the year, like they have a workshop coming up here in May on nuisance abatement. So, if nuisance abatement is a major issue in your community, Mickey Shields has put together a wonderful workshop on that topic. So, another thing is the, the league puts out a magazine every month called Citiescape, great information. I've written articles that have been in Citiescape, and they also put out special reports. If you've not taken the time to look at the league's website, I would really urge you to do that, because they have a section called Resources, and under Resources, they've got it broken down into different topics, and they're constantly adding and updating to all those different articles, publications that have been put together. And one in particular I would call your attention to is called Publications, and it's listing things, for example, I'll give you one example, because I'm familiar with it, and then they have a publication on there on working with fire departments. In small-town Iowa, that's a big deal, you know, because most small towns have rural fire departments, or volunteer fire departments, so it's a good thing to, you know, have a good 20-8 agreement with your townships and that sort of thing. So, a retired fire chief and I teamed up twenty years ago, and wrote a lot of what you see in that publication, and then Mickey Shield reached out to that gentleman and myself about four years ago, and we updated it. And so, it's a, a great resource, and that's just one example. There's all kinds of things on there. So, take time to go to that league website, when you've got the time, and just kind of peruse it, and just kind of go down through it, and see what all is out there, because there's a wealth of information on that league website. The other thing is networking with other cities. For example, at the league conference, I say, half the benefit of the league conference, besides the workshops, is meeting other city officials, and getting to know council managers and mayors in other communities, learning what projects they're working on. Another good thing is regional league meetings. They, I think there's a regional league meeting, and, you know, there is one in this state. In fact, I know Beth out in Asbury was involved in that, too. And they usually rotate their meetings between Independence and Dyersville, and one other city, and they kind of rotate them, and, and they usually do a program. But it's a good way to interact with other council members and other city staff as well. So, the other thing is, make sure your staff is trained and goes to sessions. And there's the Iowa Municipal Finance Officers Association, they have meetings twice a year. The city managers have meetings. They do a major educational program in March, coming up here, about sixteenth, seventeenth of March is when they usually do theirs. And then, another thing that the clerks have, and the finance officers, is Iowa State University has a, what they call the Iowa Municipal Professional Institute. In fact, I'm doing a workshop for them on Friday, which, if you can believe, I'm going to do a four-hour workshop on the fine art of negotiations, because I was challenged to do this workshop years ago, when someone said, we need somebody to talk about all the negotiations that take place within a city. And I said, oh, I don't know, I, I don't do that many negotiations. And I started thinking about my whole career, and I thought, ninety percent of my career has been negotiating something. And so, I put together that workshop, but they have a number of great workshops for you, and some of which you can do virtually, and some of which you can do in person out of names. They have, I think it's the last weekend in June, where they'll convene out names to these workshops. So, if you're a council member, urge your staff to get there and take part of that training, and if your staff would urge you to be, to sign up for some of that training, and both online and, and at various sites that they have them at. So, any questions or any observations on ongoing learning and development? This is going to pretty much wrap up that part. I'm going to take a short break, and then we're going to come back and go into part two of this little workshop, and that is the challenge of balancing the city budget. Okay, let's go ahead and get started on the next session, and that is the basics of balancing the budget. And this is not going to be a discussion on putting together a budget, okay? We're going to make the assumption that you've already done all the preliminary work, you've already got realistic estimates on your revenues, you've already projected your expenditures for twelve months, you've already calculated where you're coming up short, and now you've made all the easy cuts, okay? That's what we're looking at. And of course, there's a wealth of information out there on the budget from the Iowa League of Cities, and also the handbook has chapter six on the budget. The, the clerk's handbook has a great section on budgeting as well, so all that good information's out there. We're assuming you've got that all done. What is the problem then? Okay, the problem is inflation is probably having a major impact on your budgets, more so than probably ever before. You know, and inflation is running at, you know, six, seven percent there for a while. And when I just watched a program on inflation, and the point was well-made, it said, yeah, the prices went up, and they stayed there for the most part. They didn't come back down, so that's many times, too, is what's hurting. And the other thing that comes into play is a citizen's expectations of what, what you're supposed to provide, and the level of which. And then, of course, we don't want to spend too much time on the really difficult thing that you're all facing now, and that is the property tax restrictions that you all have to deal with. I always tell people, there's kind of an ugly side to property taxes, and you think about it. When you pay your federal income tax, most of you who are, you know, get a paycheck, it's taken right out, and you don't even, you don't even see that money, it's just taken out. Now, for those of us who are self-employed, we know, because every three months, I write a check, my estimated payment. I, I'm a believer, everybody should do estimated payments, because then you would know what you're paying. I know exactly what I'm paying in federal income tax, because I write the checks out, you know, every three months. So, with property taxes, it's kind of the same thing. It's two checks a year. And not only we're paying city taxes, we're paying county tax, and we're paying school tax. So, it is a huge fight that comes, you know, every, every fall and every spring. What's the timing on that first payment? September, October? Who's running for office then? State representatives, they're running for office. And if they're knocking on doors, and you just wrote your check for your property taxes, what might they hear? My taxes are too high? And so, they take that message back to Des Moines, and they feel, we got to come up, we got to solve the problem. And unfortunately, they make those decisions many times not thinking, okay, yeah, we can restrict them, but what impact is it going to have on cities and schools and counties when we do that, and what are we going to force them to do? The other thing that I've watched over the years, and I've seen this happen many times, when you observe city government and state government for fifty years, you have a big respect. And what happens is, is that this group of legislators makes a change, makes a commitment to do backfill, or they makes a commitment to do some funding for cities, counties, and schools, and then tells you, we're going to restrict taxes in this way, but we're going to make it up, or we're going to make it right with you. Well, then roll the clock ahead a few years, and that group of legislators are gone. New rule legislatures, and why are we doing this thing here? Let's get rid of that, you know? And suddenly, that restriction that was placed on a city or county a few years ago, now has a really nasty effect on them. So, the other thing that we don't even think about is the number of properties in a community that has tax-exempt status. None of your churches are paying property taxes, none of your schools, if you have a college or a university, they're probably not paying tax. If you have a lot of state property, like in my town of Anamosa, we have a state benetary, takes up a big chunk of the, the city on the east end of town. And we got streets in that area, there's water and sewer in that area, and no property taxes are being paid by the state of Iowa to the city of Anamos, okay? So, there's, there's some issues that we're dealing with, that's what I call kind of the ugly side of, of property taxes, okay? The problems, then, you have competing entities. You have schools, you have, and counties out there, all getting a piece of that property tax bill. I think there's so many people out there that when they pay their property taxes, the first thing they think of is, oh, I just sent a bunch of money off to the city. Okay. But they tend to lose sight of the fact that they sent a bunch of money to the county, not as much as the city usually, but they probably sent more money to the school than what they sent to the county, because most of the time, the school is getting the, the bigger chunk of the property tax revenue. A lot of people don't, I don't think, comprehend that, because property taxes are a little, little... A lot of people don't, I don't think comprehend that because property taxes are a little, little difficult to understand. The other thing is the reluctance for all taxpayers wanting to pay more, pay more. You know, who could blame them? I, you know, as a self-employed person, when I look at property taxes, I, we have a business where we pay sales tax. We pay income tax, federal income tax, state income tax. And I also, a self-employed person had to pay my own social security and my own Medicare. You told that all up. As I look back on my career, almost 50% of my money that I was bringing through the front door was going back out in taxes. And that is a hard thing for people, especially, I have a real appreciation and understanding for people who are self-employed. Because they know how much you're paying under property taxes and, and income taxes. So there's a real reluctance on taxpayers and many times, you know, you can't hardly blame them. You really can't, you, you have to understand where they're coming from. Another thing that comes into play is previous councils may have made some commitments. That have long lasting and far ranging impact on your city's ability to generate new revenue. Or maybe to service a new part of the city. And the best example I can give you is TIF. You know, old councils have made commitments on TIF, you then form up a TIF rebate. Or maybe they borrowed money to help fund a project and now they're using TIF revenue to pay back that, that debt. And so has quite an impact on future councils. And most of the time, these things will come out to the good. Because with TIF, you get, hopefully get new development and then down the road, there's new taxes. And eventually these TIF districts will, will run out. In fact, there's another whole subject, in fact, we did a TIF workshop back in May. That went into detail on TIF and how it works. In fact, I'm doing that workshop again now for Washington.
Are you?
Washington County Economic Development Group asked me to do it, so.
Thanks.
Another thing that comes into play is competing departments, competing in department heads. Who realize that the pie is limited, there's only so much money to go around. So I gotta get my fair share of the pie. And then sometimes you see these jealousies that take place where the public works director says, boy, that police department, they get everything they want. You know, they're never denied anything. And then, and then you might have police and fire saying, public works gets all the great equipment. We, we can't even hardly get, you know, a, a, a new squad car because we got, we spent $250,000 on a new dump truck. So there is this competing between department heads that you sometimes see take place when that budget is being put together. So not, not, not an easy thing to deal, deal with this time of year. Okay. I'm going to focus on the more difficult task is, got all the good numbers, your front end numbers, now how do you balance it? Obviously, some of the things you can look, you can reduce expenditures. You can start slashing, which is typically what, what you see happen, they start slashing expenditures. Another thing you see done is you look for other revenue options because property taxes are limited now in which you can do. In terms of new money coming in, so you can look at maybe some other revenues, looking at all your fees. One of the things I always tell cities that you need to do every time you do the budget is review your water and sewer rates. Because you are doing a terrible disservice to future generations by ignoring your water and sewer rates. Because all you're doing is postponing the inevitable. Because in water and sewer, I guarantee you the costs are going to keep going up. And the cost of the infrastructure is going to keep going up. And if you postpone rate adjustments simply because, you know, it's, it's never a good time to do it. The next generation's going to have to take care of it. I have, I can tell you of cities out there that I've worked with that thought they were doing a real service to their citizens by postponing water and sewer rate increases. And they would brag about it, we went 10 years and never raised our water rates. Well, guess what, there will be a day of reckoning. And when that happens, the next council is going to have to double rate sometimes. I've even seen one city I worked with years ago had put them off for 20 years and they had to quadruple their rates. And the other thing they did was they hadn't got the debt paid off on the old wastewater plant and now they had to build another one. And they had to quadruple their rates in order to pay for that because they couldn't get the money unless they raised the rates. Because you cannot qualify for an S R F loan or any loan unless you can demonstrate you can pay the money back. So look at those other sources of revenue, make sure that, you know, one fund isn't subsidized any other. The other thing you can do is you can use cash reserves. And I know cities out there that have done that. Once again, what are you doing to the next generation by using up all the cash reserves? There was a city, not too many years ago, that had done that for two or three years. Used up all their cash reserves because they didn't want to raise taxes. And as a result, they did not have the money to make payroll one year. They had some real cash flow problems. And this was a big city, this was, this wasn't a little bitty city, this is a big city. And they had to go to the bank and borrow money to make payroll. You don't ever want to get to that. You want to maintain those cash reserves. Because how our city is structured, we get our property tax money usually in, in kind of big lumps. You know, in the fall and then again in the spring. And so we gotta be prepared to, you know, take care of that, that, that cash flow that goes up and then goes down. Okay, the other thing you can do is come up with that magic number. How many things do we have to reduce in order to balance the budget? Now, one, some cities, they just keep talking and talking and brainstorming until they finding, hammer something out. Usually what I find was, everybody's just so exhausted at some point in these budget meetings that they just say, make a decision, I gotta go home. Okay, and so, you know, many, many times that's how the city budget is balanced, is the people just kind of give up and go home. I'm losing, we're losing my little arrow here, there we go. Okay. Another thing I've seen done is just turn it over to the staff, let them balance it, you know? But as elected officials, it's the job of the council to make these decisions. And so I've seen some councils take each and every reduction that's on the table and vote on it, which takes time, but it can be done. Or they just keep talking and talking and debating, debating. I think there's a better, and that's what the purpose of this workshop is. I came up with this idea, my last budget I did as a city administrator. I listed every conceivable reduction that I could come up. But the other list, you, you have my list, I copied it for you. Then I listed every potential enhancement of revenues that I could come up with. And there was things we could tap into. There was a franchise fee that we, we weren't doing at the time, but we could do. And I even included what I call the painful options. Now, I knew I was getting close to retiring from a state manager job. I even listed cutting my job and saying, do away with it. Eliminate the position of city administrator because Anamosa did not have city administrator in the, you know, in the 1970s or early 80s. That, that came later. And so I even put that on the list of potential cuts. Now, I'm not recommending every city administrator do that, but I did it at the time. And then allow, allow everyone to submit ideas, council members, department heads. And just say, hey, let's put it all on the table, where can we cut back? Or what revenues can we, we, we increase? Okay. I took each and every item, I calculated the gross savings or the net increase in revenues by choosing that option. But I also did something else, I calculated the net savings. Because you may reduce something in one area, but it might have an impact and require you to spend more money in another area. And so you may, for example, you may say, we're going to, we're going to eliminate a particular service. And that's going to, you know, should, should decrease our cost by 20%. Well, chances are eliminating that one service doesn't mean that your liability insurance will go down by that same percentage. It'll probably stay the same. You know, other things may not change as a result of that reduction. So what I focused on was, or you may have to hire someone else, like eliminating my position as city administrator. I said, you can do that, you're probably going to have to go out and hire some consultants to do what I'm doing right now. Or you might have to hire another staff person, you know, to come in and do some of the stuff I'm doing. So the net savings is going to have to take into consideration this added cost for a consultant. And then that's what you will actually save, okay? I then put all the options on a ballot, handed it out to all the council members and I said, the challenge before us is to decide which one of these things make the most sense and are most acceptable. And so we kind of, we did a little debate, a little review of all those different options. And then I said, we're going to vote on them. But you are going to get a ballot and you are going to assign a vote to every single item on the list. And you're going to give an A, B, C, or D ranking to that one item. At any meeting, I could live with that. That, that's something that I think we could do. The B is, not thrilled with the idea, but I think it's also doable. C is, boy, that's pushing the envelope, I'm not sure if I want to do that. And D is, no how, no way, am I ever going to vote for that particular cut, okay? Now, I did not put restrictions on how many As and Bs they assign. I do think it would be a good idea though, for, for cities that are really struggling with the budget. Because you're going to have some folks that'll give everything a D, okay? No how, no way, am I going to agree to that? And I've also seen the other extreme where they just want to cut everything, they'll give them all an A. So I did this process or something similar to it in a town out near, out in western Iowa. What we did there was we said, we looked at the total number of options, let, let's say there's 20, let's say there's 24 of them. You got four options, A, B, C, and D. You're going to do six As, you're going to do six Bs, six Cs and six Ds. And everybody's going to follow the same system, okay? And only mayors and council members get to vote on this process. Department heads, we'd say, you're not duly elected by the public. The public elected the council to make these tough decisions and this is how we're going to do it. Give them a deadline, turn in their ballot, turn in the city clerk and then tabulate the results by totaling up. How many council members gave each of these items an A, how many council members gave it a B? And then I would sign a numerical number to that, just like school. An A was four points, a B was three points, C was two points and a D was one point. Come up with a total score, the higher the number, the more acceptable was the cut. Because that's the rankings, now you can use any, any kind of ranking system you want. But I use this one because people can understand that A, B, C, and D ranking system from having been at school. Although they tell me now, my granddaughter was showing me a report card, they don't use that A, B, and C system anymore. So I don't know how many of your council members can identify with it anymore. But anyway, back then, everybody identified with it. And so what we did was, we have a composite score on every single item. And then we put together a spreadsheet and showed the most, most acceptable item and then worked our way down the list. And so what we would do then with that list is, we would say, okay, in order to balance this budget, we had to cut, you know, $100,000. Work your way down the list until you get $100,000. And that's where you draw the line, okay? Fairly simple and should be fairly efficient way to do it as well. Now, some of the things you need to consider is that the, the, where am I, okay. I got way ahead of myself. There we are, okay. One of the problems you might have with this is explaining it to the citizens. They might not understand how it works. So you might want to just kind of take a few minutes to put it on your website. This is what you're doing, maybe show them the ballot on your website. Another problem you could kind of come into is being unrealistic on your savings. You know, if you don't do the net savings and just go strictly by gross savings. You may find that, no, we're not really going to save that much money by making this cut for this decision. So you gotta be very realistic. There will be things that will come in that you're not thinking about now, these unforeseen consequences or proposed reductions that nobody's thinking about at the time. So you need to kind of be prepared for that one. And the other thing is, is that you might have a perception that, boy, once that's locked in, it's a done deal, can't change it. You've got to accept the fact that you have to have some flexibility here. And that you might do this ranking, but maybe you go down the list. And you realize that this one item that ranked high, maybe for whatever reason, is just not going to work. So you gotta make sure that your council is on board with, that there is some flexibility with this, that it's not locked in, okay? Another thing to keep in mind is that if three council members, five member council, let's say three or seven, it's four. If, if the majority of the council had an item ranked all As, they could put that in place, you know, because they got the votes to do that. Even though on the composite score, because other council members may have ranked it with a C or a D. And it kind of skewed things a little bit because there were such a spread. Be very careful when you do this, that you look at a spreadsheet that shows how each and every council member voted. And if it appears that, you know, there's a solid majority to do something. And if those folks make up their mind to do it, it's probably going to happen. And so do make sure that you realize that if a majority of, say a five member council, if it's three As, it might be a done deal. The other thing that could take place is, you know, the spreadsheet that you do will be obviously available to anybody to look at. It's a public record, everything we do is basically a public record. Could be a little council bickering like, that was my pet project and you gave it a D? You could see a little of that type thing take place. Or you could have disgruntled department heads who say, what do you mean, you ranked all my fire department projects with a C and D? What's that all about? And so there's a little bit of that could take place. Or there could be the citizens out there that, maybe there's a large group of citizens that are just 100% behind the library. And you've had major reductions that showed up that you're going to make in the library for whatever reason. Okay, they're disgruntled. So there's going to be a little of that take place. The other thing that I ran into a little bit is failing to follow through on the cuts that we said we were going to make to get that budget balanced. And when it came time then to actually do it, they didn't have the political will to make some of those cuts. So I also want to be realistic with you folks and that is, you could face that with council members who say, okay, I'm behind this process, it's all good. And then when it comes time to implement it, well, I'm not going to do that. And so that is something to consider. And so that is why I have my next slide and that is, you need to do the process fairly soon in the budgeting process. And you need to get council commitment. If you find that half of your council says, this is the dumbest idea I've ever seen, don't involve it. In fact, if one or two of them says, no how, no way, am I going to do this? Then maybe you just rethink it and maybe do it next year or the year after. But I think in order for it to be successful, you almost need 100% council commitment to, to, to follow up processes like this. Now, your budget may not be that difficult and you may not need to do this. This is a process that I would recommend for cities that have really got some major financial problems. And have some major cuts that they have to make. If you're, if your city is in good fortune where you got a little minor tweaking here and there, the budget will be fine, we're all good. Don't even do this. This is for those cities that have really a difficult time matching the budget, balancing the budget. Now, the next item I debated whether or not to put in here and that is, you know, you think back to, why is it we're dealing with some of this stuff? It's because of legislation that was put out by the state legislature. And I always tell council members, newly elected council members, there's an analogy I'd like to share with you to help you understand the role of the state and federal government when it comes to cities, okay? Look upon the federal government as the grandparents, okay? As the grandparents, they, they, they know everything, they're all knowing that, you know, and they've been around a long, long time. Drop down the next level, state, they're the parents. And they're making the rules, you gotta abide by the rules. And folks at the city level, we are the kids, we are the minors in this group. And, and we have to listen to what the grandparents, the federal government is throwing at us. And we also have to follow the rules that our parents have laid out for us. And so. And so as a city council member, as a city department head, the sooner you accept that and that analogy, the easier life will be going forward, because much of this is beyond your control. And that's why I put this on there. If your city is struggling balancing the budget, I would share this list with your state representative and your state senator and say, hey, folks, this is what we're dealing with. We would certainly challenge you to rank this. How would you rank this if you were in my position? Which of these items would you recommend that we cut, okay? And see what kind of feedback you get. Now, the most recent restrictions on the budgeting was across party lines. Both parties voted for it. There was very few people that didn't vote for it. So they can choose whichever state representative or whatever state senator you want, probably a pretty good chance they voted for it. So if you've got the courage, go to one of their, you know, their forums that they have and say, here's what we're dealing with, here's our ballot that we were given, where we have to make reductions. Which ones would you recommend if you were in our position? See what they come back. And so my guess is, you may not get anything back, but you might have a little fun with it, okay? Another thing I think is important to do, and that is, if you're doing something like this, notify the public early and often that this is what you're doing. The other thing, I told councils to do this 20 years ago when we had major property tax changes, and that is, as a city, we have done a fantastic job of taking what's ever been thrown at us and making adjustments, making reductions, making changes to get the job done. What we have never done in all of our years is, we have never done anything drastic. We have never closed the library. We have never closed the swimming pool. We have never done anything really drastic that gets everybody's attention. Maybe this time around, if you're really struggling between lighting off a police officer versus shutting down the pool, maybe you close the pool. And maybe you put a sign on the pool that says, the pool will not be open this year because of major property tax reductions, we simply could not afford to keep the pool open. By the way, if you're happy with this decision, here's the email and phone number of their representatives in our area. I don't know if any city will ever take me up on that challenge, but I think it would be a great idea to just put it out there, folks, you know? Yeah, make some noise. The other key thing I think is you need to warn the public. More service reductions may be coming. Because as you deal with the inflation and you deal with, you know, limitations on property taxes, something's not a gift. And so there's gotta be service reductions in the future. You need to let the citizens know now that these are coming, so they're not shocked when they actually do. One of the areas that I think are gonna be pretty tempting for councils to cut in the future is the various contributions we make to organizations like your organization, where if you're trying to decide to make a contribution to your organization, the Chamber of Commerce, or the Greater Development Dubuque Corporation, or whatever it might be, or laying off 10 police officers in Dubuque, what are you gonna do? Are you going to lay off those police officers? Or are you going to cut back on these contributions to various agencies and organizations that have now come to depend upon the money that they've gotten over the years from city and county government? Because we have the ability to help fund these great organizations, and they do great things. But unfortunately, we may not be able to afford to keep channeling property tax money to those organizations when we're cutting to the bone on city services and maybe having to reduce city services because of, you know, limitations. Another thing you could do is challenge your citizens. Here's our list. Feel free to rank them and tell us how you would do. And then you could share that with your council members, maybe before they make their final decision. So once again, with city websites, it would be easy, like in your case, to put it out there on your website and do it, and just say, folks, here's what we're faced with. We'd curious to know how you see it. And because this is your money we're spending, and these are the services that you've become accustomed to that we may have to cut back. Has anybody ever done anything like this? Was any, any, you have something like that?
We had to close the, our pool here before last. So one of the two city pools had to be closed. And then we put it as actually one of our top 12 pools and priorities for the following year, open sudden pool, I'm very simple. Sudden pool. So it actually, because we look at it as an issue of equity, it serves an area of our town, but it makes it really difficult for those families to get their children to go towards.
Yes.
So we made it a priority, and we opened it. And we had to raise the fee and the pay for lifeguards.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we're at, is we are not gonna have people less than pay them.
Yeah.
It's a big deal. And this for you guys out in the city.
Now, what, the rest of you folks in some of your cities, for example, in Edward, how difficult is the next budget trying to be balanced? Well, you're into it now, obviously.
It's tight. It's tight, just because of the changes that are coming.
Yeah.
You know, and like you said, there's the wage increases.
Yeah.
At least to match the next city or to draw future employees, you know, you gotta have that there.
Yeah.
The benefits, everything's on an increase, all the supplies, like I was just thinking, like, is our chlorine, like, our cost of our sewer plant, are we, we need to reevaluate our water and sewer charges? Just to make sure that we are keeping our reserves where they should be. I'm sure Janet's already done it, but, you know, it's little things like that, just the inflation cost of the supplies to do the water, to do the sewer.
Yeah.
And then, you know, all that.
And so, yeah, the insurance is just...
Yeah, the health.
I think, I think we were quoted a 24% increase. Yeah.
It's worrying.
It's amazing, so, yeah, and then they're, they're just, they're really messing with the, you know, our money coming in every month and stuff, so we...
Okay. Anybody else wanna share what your cities are up against as far as this budget?
Insurance.
Yeah.
Insurance and...
Yeah.
You know, like last, well, the last budget, you know what, there was inflation. And I think I Googled it, it was like 14% last year, and we're down to like 8% right now or something.
Yeah.
Well, when we budgeted last year, we were not expecting 14%.
Right.
You know, and then we had to amend, and then it's not, it's slowly leveling out, but it's still increasing.
Yeah.
They could make another jump, I don't know.
The legacy costs are always there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I watched the Ken Burns Dust Bowl documentary last night, and one part of it struck me, as they recognized that tilling up the soil was adding more and more issues, more and more windstorms, dust bowls, issues. The price of wheat went down so much that farmers could only respond by tilling up more soil.
Oh.
And thus increasing the climatic issues that were being created. And more and more, they just, the only thing they could think to do was till up more of this, you know, to plant more wheat that was dying off as fast as they planted it because the dust bowls.
It was a cycle. Well, to wrap this up for you folks, I apologize for going over just a little bit here, but I've already talked about the next thing, place the thing on the ballot if you didn't want to, be prepared for tough choices. Any questions on anything that I've had so far before I adjourned in?
Where do we begin that?
Iowa League of Cities.
Oh, really?
Iowa League of Cities, yeah. If you went to the municipal policy leader, municipal leadership academy.
I did go there, but...
They should have given you one.
Well, years ago.
Okay.
On your first round.
Every time you go, there's one, yeah, there you go. So bottom line is, thank you all for your efforts. I know being a council member is not an easy job. I really appreciate someone like you coming back.
Yeah.
And the old saying is, you knew better.
Why?
But it's a thankless job.
That's right.
And thank goodness that you folks are willing to do it. My only word of concern is that the next budget might be even worse, one that time might be even worse. And...
Just have to adapt to it, finding a way to, I think, fine.
And if you're really frustrated with the little legislaters did, you've been on the front.
Yeah.
But I do think informing citizens that the reason that cuts and prices and costs are happening is because of the passion taken. And if people don't recognize that and they throw it with individuals who are going to start vocalizing about these, but it doesn't happen.
Right.
So, I'll be interested.
Yes.
Last couple of things here, I mentioned a lot of stuff about the Iowa League of Cities. Once again, go to their website, go to that resource category, and then go down to administration. And you're gonna see a lot of the, some of the handouts that I referred to tonight. And we gave you a lot of different handouts, so thank you, Tricia.
I didn't put them all, but why not?
Typically, when I do these workshops, you have to send me an email, say you want them.
Well, you know, this is not my first rodeo with you, Pat, and I know everything you refer to is really important and people want it, so I just thought I'm gonna be proactive here. So thank you very much, Pat.
You bet. Thank you for your attention back.